It is seven o'clock, we will call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the name of the republic, the free, the state, and the one that governs. And with this all with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
The Ozaki Press is online with us.
Excellent, welcome Ozaki Press, thank you for that. Uh, if the clerk could call the roll, that'd be outstanding.
Trusty Pappy. Trusty Ha.
Here.
Trusty Adrian.
Here.
President Murphy.
Here.
Trusty Doorward.
Here.
Trusty Bart.
Here.
Trusty Mind.
President.
Thank you.
All right, having a quorum, we'll move on. Uh, next item is public comments, again, anything that's not on the agenda. Five minutes per person. Hearing none, we'll move on.
Can I just say something real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
So just personal story real quick, um, it, it's been a rough week. But I really feel the love of the people in Fredonia and realize how good of citizens that we have here. Uh, my dog took off on me this week, which was not fun. Nine o'clock at night, was kind of walking around, talking to people, and within an hour, we were able to get her back home. Um, and you know how scary it is when you have a dog going insane, and especially at night, so. I do definitely think we have a good group of citizens in this village, and everybody's really wonderful, so I just want to make a statement that. That's all good.
We're wishing.
Is that our history?
Yes. Yeah, she, uh, she actually picked up down in Wisconsin Street and ran up by the church, so.
She was in a safe place.
She was, she made it up on somebody's court, so.
Yeah, I saw that, I, I was by the church, I thought that was.
Yeah.
Yeah, immediately I saw it and I went, oh, I think I know that dog, and then I saw your comment, I'm like, okay, good.
Yeah.
We're good, so, excellent. Yep, citizens of Fredonia step up again, way to go, everyone. Anything else? All right, we will move on then, next is the consent agenda. I will note that there's two changes, um, well, first of all, it's the minutes, and there's two changes in there. Um, one of them is, we were talking about the water main break, and in the minutes, um, it should say North Milwaukee Street instead of Highland Drive. And then also, um, for five A, we had presentations, and we had said the first ever beautification award, and, um, it actually is not, it is, there has been done in the past, so that is taken out. Um, and then we've got the general fund, water sewer invoices, and approval of the temporary class B for Divine Savior.
I'll make a motion, approve consent agenda, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, next we have the swearing in of our new paramedic, Crystal Woda. Hello.
Hello.
I think.
Welcome.
Why are they all coming on up here?
Yeah.
You. You can check the time, come on out, and then you can say hello to the red.
So introducing you, Crystal Woda, um, she is number two of three paramedics that we're hiring, just a little background, uh, receiver, paramedic. Uh, technician, consultant's degree, from this state college in twenty seventeen. She went back to this state college in twenty nineteen to get critical care certification for paramedic. Uh, her work experience, she was with four required departments, uh, in EMS. And was sheriff, county EMS, critical care paramedic, and recently, uh, was working at Superior Airborne Ambulance as a flight paramedic. So, uh, welcome to the water store.
You didn't bring your helicopter with?
Nope.
Welcome to the team, we're proud to have you.
Absolutely, thank you. You'll learn to love us if you haven't already.
Today was her first day, she started with us this morning, and, uh, been around the area, we took, uh, her medic vehicle with us this morning to get the flights on, finally. Uh, so, she met a lot of people upstate, she was running. Okay.
There you go, excellent. Well, welcome, and excited to have you here. Um, and then, Michelle will be, uh. Swearing.
You went out and come on one side, and Michelle on the other. Then you had your hubby Derek for monkey support.
These rays are breaking, and are being acquised. I, for someone that's still, having been appointed as a paramedic, so he's been appointed, but has not yet entered upon the duties thereof. Still have not yet entered the duties thereof. Swear that I will support the constitution of the United States. Swear that I will support the constitution of the United States, and the constitution of the state of Wisconsin, and the constitution of the state of Wisconsin. And I will faithfully discharge the duties, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of bed office to the bed in my village. Bed office to the foster care, so help me God.
Excellent, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Seems like we've been doing a lot of that stuff lately, it's pretty cool.
Isn't that neat, good?
Super nice.
So our newest firefighter in action at the open house over the weekend, that was.
Excellent. It's outstanding. All right, we'll move on to report on village committees, first, uh, trustee Bart's with the Parks and Rec, actually, I suppose, both, Parks and Rec and hundred and fiftieth anniversary.
All right, so we met, I think it was last week, um, for Parks and Rec, we had a good turnout, we actually got, um, an additional citizen show up to the meeting, which was really good and helpful. So, one of the things that we spoke about was the splash pad and the estimate that we got. And it's broken into two phases, which is good. Uh, I think everybody's got copies of that at their place. So, after thing.
Welcome to everyone.
For you and Dan.
Oh, okay.
To everybody, okay. Um, so, it's broken into two phases, which is really nice. Um, our first phase is one hundred and fifty-five, and there's a lot of that work that's going to be done in-house that our DPW team is going to handle, which saves us, um, a lot of money, so. Thirty-some thousand, thirty-five thousand roughly, and then phase two will be all the additives and all the features and everything, so. That one is about one hundred and thirty-five thousand, so overall, with the village funding and everything that we've got, we're looking at one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for the splash pad, which is really great. We started the friend of Fredonia to start fundraising and do all that, so that's really exciting. Um, we reviewed quickly the movie in the park and how well that one, I think we spoke about that at one of the last meetings. We talked about the holiday tree lighting, and we also discussed our future winter walk, which I think will be a lot of fun.
Yeah, I'll note, I mean, it's, it's nice with the splash pad, at least the amount of people that have started to step up, and we've got other ones already that have said, hey, either we'll do a donation in kind, or we'll do some of the work on our own type thing, and. That's pretty cool, and including something like the project management is a big part of that, and we might have somebody that would be willing to donate that time, which is just outstanding. Um, so, as far as the upfront stuff needed to at least get, you know, the stuff actually done, we're, we're in good shape, and I think it's cool that we can. Put it in, in two phases, so that we can actually fundraise for the other things, and have it broken out and saying, hey, you know, pay for the twin splash, it's fifteen grand or whatever, it's just neat, people can have their names and stuff, I think it's awesome, so. Any questions of trustee Bart's on the Parks and Rec committee? Move on to the hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration.
All right, um, hundred and fifty, yes, we had a quick meeting, um, kind of paring down a few things, we talked about the music options that we have, we've been getting estimates, I think they're all in now, and we're, um. As of now, we're looking at booking a band, possibly two, we'll see how that goes. Uh, we talked about the cornhole tournament, luckily, our local Fredonia Lions has committed to. Sponsoring and doing the tournament the day of, so that's really exciting. Uh, we also discussed the time capsule, so we're reaching out to the school. Possibly doing us essay contest for the older kids, get the younger kids involved as well for ideas and things to put into the time capsule, so that's exciting. And then we continued our discussion on craft fair, which we got some really good information and feedback, so. It's really good, we've got another meeting coming up here in the next couple of weeks, and we'll keep plugging away with that.
I'll just add that I had a discussion with trustee Door here, and we were talking about the time capsule, and how, we think that there's two of them that are actually there, one that's about fifty years old, and the other one that's only about twenty?
Yeah, eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah, so I think we're talking about doing one and not the other type thing, so. Might be a good idea, so. All right, anything else for trustee Bart's? If not, then we will move on to reports, report on operations of the, uh, village president. Um, I really don't have anything to add at this, this point, I think, I'm just really proud of us and how we've been. Going about our work here within the last few months, I want to say I did kind of put together a timeline earlier, I think that we looked at in May, as far as the budget goes. Um, to the best of my knowledge, I think we're right on track with that, which is outstanding, I feel like there hasn't been a lot of the. Hurry up, hurry up, hurry up, and, and slam things together like maybe we have in the past years, so that's good. Um, and I just, I encourage open communication about stuff, and look forward to, uh, making any changes and any amendments or whatever to the budget, uh, at the next meeting when we vote on it, so. That's all I have, uh, I'll move on, unless anyone's got any questions of me to the village administrator.
Sorry, uh, we continue to work on the interactive items for the individual park, uh, working out some beautiful events there, some crazy projects that I get, uh, we want to set it off of the one we landed over in southern town. Two, which is great. Uh, continue to, uh, build relationships, meet with future developers, I can, you'll have that sharing with you then, if you have a new offer for us. In the virtual park, yeah, very detailed, we'll schedule the close session meeting, uh, and, uh, next couple of meetings that we have, but that's just for the, exciting news, continuing to have. Um, under our policy, our budget is kept, uh, anywhere in our time, moving forward to wrapping it up here in this couple of meetings. Uh, we'll talk about the slide pad, had a really good time on, uh, on Madison, and the, uh, the group, uh, different people from around the state that were doing act follow. And it's specifically looking at innovation brands, and how those were going to get picked by. So an innovation brand is meant to inspire cooperation, you can miss that one. So, uh, it was really nice to give an example of how we are already building that, with my role, uh, creating building, the talent in the area. Uh, and then partnership, uh, paramedic program, and most. Uh, kind of gave, well, we can, yeah. Hopefully it was nine eleven, we had to ask in, uh, spring of next year, and our people think that we, this, and, and, uh, this, uh, we're probably going to be, we're probably going to. Um, for health safety infrastructure, you know, the water main break, or you can actually see who did a great job, uh, jump on something, and it's, we actually, we've had, uh. Uh, during the fall estimate, we, uh, two of the businesses for, uh, before the lab work. It's how, but then, it is, uh, it is pretty promising, uh, fewer two, so we can get that work early to consume, and a brand, and, and, uh. Uh, the Marshall box picked off, the light one program, I'll give just happy credit, as somebody who's not a bad ass, uh, great. And, uh, it sounds like there's a huge success, they're going to be able to add some, to that program, and then. Uh, fire department chief, Jerry Lawler, they received a pretty sizable grant, so I'll let you see what we'll do. Um, and then, and finally, we need to do our application, uh, this will be our letters, uh, the traffic on our website. And, uh, we can do, we can do, they go up and up, and we need to do that, because we need to work out. Up here, clear, on my notes, uh, remember first, as soon as you guys are looking at, that's the air's flat pack, keep off, maybe, we're like, you're getting very familiar with the, since you've been helping out, anyway, to learn more about the project. The one that makes a big, uh, the part. Thank you.
Excellent, do you have, I was just curious about this, do you have any insight as to how the kids are being chosen for the ride along thing, or how often it's going to happen, or?
I know you wanted to do four of them, you have to reach those on.
Yeah.
Hey, Carl Chandler.
Yeah, I'm not, uh.
Yeah.
I think my daughter hangs out with the first, and I had the first one, so I hope not, yeah. Anyway.
I'm pretty certain I've never heard anyone say, I went to Madison and had fun at the department or wherever.
I, that, that's, that's the face that I.
So.
Whoa. Yeah. Interesting, I was thinking the same thing, Josh.
I thought you meant it. If anybody's gonna sell that one, it's gonna be Chris.
Yeah, for sure, it was a great time.
Splash, I think, is November first, at what time, you said seven?
Uh, it was six, right?
Six, there's seven, right?
Six.
Yeah, already a lot of, uh, people that are, are speaking for that, so it's cool, I mean, I'm, I'm. Thrilled to at least give people information on that, whether they take it and do whatever with it, I guess it was up to them, but. All right, anything else for the administrator? All right, then we will move on to the marshal's report, which is in your packet. Hmm, any questions on that at all, discussion?
The dogs get any hits?
The what?
Did the dogs get any hits?
They went to the, they did a search of the high school.
Oh, I don't know.
They came in, yeah, they're doing a lot of checks.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything.
I had a question, I don't, I mean, I don't know if anybody can answer, I guess, Marshall really has to be here, right? Uh, why is revenue going so low? He's not getting as much tickets?
No, I think that he always says that the revenue catches up. So it looks really low, but then, as different, uh, different things come at the end of the years, when they end up.
Probably when court is in session and right now.
Right.
That joins, uh. Anything, what do you call it? Um, the joint court system, they, basis throughout, and they only distribute for like, uh.
Okay. So it should catch up at the end of the year, huh?
Usually by June, we end up getting them, just before June, we end up getting the final number.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gotta go through their whole system.
Yeah. Yep. Any other questions on the marshal's report? All right, we'll move on to the fire chief.
Yeah, it, you should have a very important packet, um, and one thing special, uh, that I wanted to note in the training section was that we did have a. Special Saturday practice, uh, that was for company by, uh, rural water movement, so using our tankers, or our tent, and they called it up. Uh, in transporting water to the fire scene, that was in conjunction with lobbies and building party departments, putting on that training for other members and employees that we see that. It's always good for the newer, younger members to see how we give water to the fires, to see how the operation gets set up quickly, how we can, how much water can actually flow. Uh, paramedic updates, um, just kind of review a little bit back in May, really pretty, pretty higher Josh, uh, we have Crystal here tonight, uh, the next step for Crystal is to get her certifications. Uh, uh, reviewed by the medical director, Aurora, uh, we'll do a little bit of skill assessment, and then we'll have her act on our roster and running natural schedule for paramedic. Uh, we do have a third candidate still on wondering here for, uh, that desires to play time, uh, I reached out to him again today and asked if we could extend a, uh, second interview, give her a presentation. Um, so waiting for a response back from him, he did, we did have a second interview scheduled, and we're extending it, so we gave a little week here to get back on speed. Uh, I did a bit of fourth interview, uh, paramedic candidate, uh, which she only desires a part time, so, um, keep her in the back pocket for part time, to possibly people want to take the patient, things like that, so. Um, some good news, recent applications, uh, it's been crazy, we have patients that have been coming in, uh, it's hard to believe, I mean. We had Josh, we had Mark, uh, who's worked members under us back in August, but I forgot who he was, uh. Uh, and Ambula Trevor, and Mark lives in Fillmore area, but Mark comes here and does, I'm Josh, he's suffered with Josh, and he said, well, that, well, here, I can, uh, so, great, it's great. Um, and then we had, um. Brady, uh, Mara, uh, and gentlemen, they live on the firefighter staff, status, and the ability to practice, and we're all in the firefighter school in spring. Uh, Ethan Cup just moved from, uh, he's still a senior in high school here, he moved for our junior program, and he's just going to be around the firefighter support. Um, Adrian LaHaw, lives up here on St. Rose Avenue, two houses away from the warehouse, um, she's already, uh, diverse amount of technician game level. Um, and, uh, she's going to be a media planning place for us, she's just, she's got a guy who likes to sign it up by Aurora, and, uh, she's going to be in, I think, the roster, and that's, it's very. Same thing with Becca, Rebecca Schiller, Becky Schiller, uh, she's a random micro evidence, um, that asked to come down here, she had five of the paramedic, like, uh, position, but she didn't have a paramedic license, but she wants to, uh, pay here. She's willing to tell the station, she suffers shifts, so we will take the help. And then the last one we got here at the end of September, one very superior of hyper firefighters, they have, Daniel's fair. The rest will go in the period in spring and, uh, in after January, or anywhere for the school, so. It's been significant, it's increased different applications, private. Uh, our responses, just to put review there, um, various amount, we have six more last year, support. The last year of this time, uh, rescue responses, we got increasing, over forty, uh, with. The lower of all volumes in the last couple of months here, it's kind of decreasing a little bit, yeah, no, it's into the response, we're down sixteen last, kind of this year. Uh, but the majority of us that we, the smallest ever, we were up thirteen compared to last year, so, um, I mean, a good job. That's kind of it for that report, um, as first of all, I mentioned, uh, we did, we were successful, I applied for a comp here financial grant. Um. It is a grant for fund market utilities, uh, they do Wisconsin, Minnesota, and the like, that they, they do grants also. And we were one of five brands that was successful in a partnership grant. Uh, we teamed up with all the party departments, uh, to purchase a trailer and traffic safety equipment. Um, utilizing forty-five, forty-three, and seventy-seven as our, our main, which ensures a firefighter safety over there, cars that are traveling. At sixty, seventy miles an hour down that road, and just probably try to, uh, take here, or somebody that needs help, or a car accident, so, and there. We'll get home with that, and get moving fast, uh, kind of, uh, firefighters. Um, and we're thinking about like a durable from the trailer, so. See how that goes, but I sent out the dollars, and felt that it, I think, we're in receipt. And then the, uh, the last thing that I did, well, I just recently, last week, I applied for another grant in firehouse spots for. For, for, uh, you see, we'll see in the next three months, for that, like.
Excellent. Well, I do want to say, you know, even on Facebook, the, the ad that you guys put together, you know, I think the last time I saw it had a hundred and seventy-three shares, which is, you know, insane, so I think. That's awesome that you're getting the response that you're getting for not just firefighters, but also for paramedics and EMTs and all that stuff, I think that might have a big deal about it, because. People really are sharing it and realizing, I mean, it's, it's impressive, right? We, we get the funding, and, and within, what, three weeks, we have. Three, four weeks, we have more and more coming, so it's just, it's awesome. Um, that's a big, big shout out to you guys for keeping it going and really getting yourselves out there, so thank you on that, again, thanks for Josh for doing everything he did at the county, and. Really putting us in a good spot here, so really appreciate everything you guys do all around, it's work. Any other questions for the fire chief?
Not so much a question, but a comment, um, the open house seemed to be, you know, the success, uh, Sunday. I brought my two youngest daughters, and, uh, they just had a blast. You know, not even just the fun stuff, but even the, the learning stuff, and seeing what y'all do, and I thought it was, uh, was a well, got together, uh, event. And, uh, it seemed to be well attended from what I could see. So, so, good job, uh, photo, see you in the, in the.
Did they squirt the horse?
Yes, clearly, I mean, my, my little, she did every, everything there was to be done there. I expected to spend about half hour there, it's been two hours.
Yeah, it's pretty much I I ever saw that where they actually put the like a little house up there or whatever and they use the the booster. Did you, is that your thing you did that or do you know?
Well, we had, we had a little one, uh about that tall, this one was borrowed from New York Fire Department. Oh, oh. Kind of a purpose from down to more, it's a little bit bigger. My, but uh safer was safer.
Yeah, I was impressed, that was, that was good, that was a good uh.
Watching them do the extraction out of the cars was was neat, my daughter and I sat and watched that, just learning all the things that they have to do in the, yeah, and the cribs and. I mean, I learned a lot that you don't think of and you kind of just take for granted on a daily basis, but it was really awesome.
Nice work, I missed that unfortunately. There's next year, I suppose, right? Awesome, don't let me miss a ton.
Just for you.
Yes, just for me, anybody wants to come if they can. All right, uh moving on to the public works wastewater treatment plant. Ports in your packet Eric is unable to be here, but we do have Brandon in case we have anything that we had questions on, is there anything you want to mention specifically? Okay, any questions? Yeah, I think he has said all like three words tonight, hasn't he? Okay, yep, perfect. All right, if there's no questions, we'll move on to the clerk.
Um my report is also in your packet, but I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who went through all their text messages and personal emails to respond to our public records request. Um we have um invoice the requestor and once we receive their payment, we'll send our response. Also, um this is um my opportunity to tell the trustees who are up for reelection um that uh I have provided paperwork both um. Um to run again or not to run again, um and the deadlines are in your packet, uh if you have any questions, let me know. And I think that's everything, I'll say again that we are actively recruiting poll workers, so if you know anyone who is interested, please send them my way. Um I have about thirteen who wish to do it again this year, um and I need at least fourteen, um so send them my way, please.
Do you need at least one more?
Just one more. If everybody can work every election, yes.
All right. Tiffany, you want to do it?
I won't make eye contact.
I know, I'm thinking about doing it, we'll see what happens. All right, uh any other questions for the clerk? Move on to the treasurer. All right.
How did the meeting go with the county treasurer and the collection expectation? Did you learn a few things?
Yeah, I mean, we all. She gave us, you know.
All right, anything else for the treasurer? We'll move on to uh our awesome Ozaki County District Two Supervisor.
Well, that's quite an introduction, but thank you. That's a typo, actually. Yeah.
It's it used to be, I one time I was district two. That's twenty years ago.
So, uh I've got nothing to report uh directly from the county, but definitely want to welcome Crystal to the team. I am very familiar with midstate technical college, I grew up in Wisconsin Rapids, so very familiar with that school, so it's a great school. And um like I said, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it's nice to see this program that we work so hard on finally come to fruition, so we're proud and happy to have you here. I think you're gonna love this team, this is a phenomenal team sitting here, Brian does a phenomenal job and so all the guys down there, so. Um welcome, we're happy to have you and uh definitely excited to see this move forward and actually get a check from the county, I was getting a little worried there for a minute, so I was glad to see that that. Actually is going forward, so like I said, a lot of hard work was put in by many and um just nice to see it actually paying off and going somewhere, so. It's always nice to see when they put all that hard work and they actually get it done, so. Um so thank you and welcome, and if anyone's got any questions for me, um county, I can answer, but I've got nothing outside of that at this time.
All right, any questions, Josh? All right, if not, we are up for items for discussion and or action. And the first one is discussion and possible action on a sewer credit request by Mr. Robert Peterson of two twenty nine Fredonia Avenue. Um you want me to tee this up or whatever? Melissa, you want to? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I'll grab my. Mumble, 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 did you hear that?
In and the question Michelle and Mike has water bill was some high and she explained that it wouldn't be. She came back and questioned me. Wanted to speak frankly, so we went into the comments room and he was. Was very.
Vocal.
Vocal.
Yeah.
He did tell Michelle that he did water the express, there was no reason why his water bill was higher and we talked. Then it went out, we did a pre read, that is weird, it was correct, well then, yes, he did water the express. So he's asking for a credit on the sewer portion of his water. I told him that's not standard practice, I can change it, he has to continue. He made a request to come here, I did the work, as you can see, he is not here. My recommendation would be to deny that request, um there's several residents in the water progress this summer and did not need your credit. And he knowingly knows the water, so.
And we, we do have an option to install a second meter for that.
So I I would just point out that um we have in the past done some things, but that was for somebody that did not know that their water was on and running, this is something that. Um our resident had done and admits that he was watering his lawn, so he knows that he was using the water. Again, just for everyone's reference, we cannot credit out water and utility, sewer is within our jurisdiction to do, so.
Is there a reason why he's not here, is he supposed to be here? So. So I read the packet here, I mean, this to me seems pretty open and shut, so I don't, I think this should be denied, so I'll be voting, or I don't know how we want to do this, we can't really make a motion to deny anything, so.
Well. Yeah, we do.
Oh yeah, this is my cue, right?
You have a pile, Dan, here it is.
So we actually did talk to um the attorney today as to what to do, but honestly, uh we can do whatever we want, we can vote to say yes, we can, you know, to do it and then take the vote and then. Make it however it comes out, or we can actually do a motion to deny, um that is actually on the on the option to do, so.
I will make that motion to deny.
Okay, so let's pause for a second, so I make sure I get it.
None of these decisions are precedent setting.
Correct, no, right.
Each individually judged on the circumstances on the ground, so.
Um so motion to deny the sewer request two twenty nine Fredonia.
Correct, so by by voting aye, you are voting to deny it. Just okay, any more discussion? All right, then.
Kurt, you seconded?
I seconded.
All right, so I'll call it done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, this denied. All right. Moving on, next we have discussion and potential direction to the village administrator regarding preliminary twenty twenty four budget. So I'm going to point out real quickly here that because of the schedule and what we've we've been able to accomplish in the past, since I've been here, we haven't really had one of these on the agenda where in between when we. Have the bu- budget presentation and when we actually accept the budget where we've come back and actually had the opportunity to talk about things or or discuss things. So um again, I want to say thank you for everybody for moving it ahead as much as we could and actually making something like this possible, but also just to remind everybody that. Tonight is a night to discuss things if you want to, or give the administrator um some direction, nothing is actually going to be voted on tonight to take anything out of. Budget or add anything in, so with that uh in mind, if there's any discussion. Now would be the time to do it.
I had a question regarding a few items, um. I guess I don't know if some of the department has maybe could uh question uh after a little better, but. So there is a uh sixty thousand dollar proposal. Uh for I should say proposal, but sixty thousand dollars is being uh earmarked for a purchase of a skid steer. Do we, do we have a skid steer already or is that an item that's needed or?
I just give you a background, it was requested the uh the department of works. Uh I believe that it's got that homework works being you can get put on C I D reviewed finance, they have heard the C I D, you guys that have heard C I D list, it's kind of hot. Uh we can use it for a lot of things, so right now we have our big payload and. Or then with a skid or we can utilize it when we're getting in smaller areas, uh. One of the things we do struggle with, we do get blurs, it's not law, but we don't have any forks, they're not, they're not. So I was given that. Um I know Eric said we're still flying. I don't remember what I'm saying. Yeah, but we can use.
So we didn't have one.
And I think that one of the bigger things is even when you remember Freedom Park right up on the road that busted up there, I was actually down there with with Chris, I think you were watching that and it was. It was sorely needed, I mean, them trying to use their big payloader to to do different things and, you know, load things in or whatever, it was, it it would have been a lot easier to maneuver stuff like that, put gravel and things like that. So I think, I think it's an expense that um I don't, let's put it this way, I think it would get used.
And then I had a question regarding the. Uh one million dollars, it's 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 approximately one point two, you know, it's a water that for reconstruction of Highland Drive. Um is this something that's been in the works for a while, why why is this needed, is it, is it more for uh because we have new businesses? Coming in there or what, what's going on with that?
Sure, so if you remember back to the transition study that we here.
Yeah.
While that study we looked at traffic bounds, call or or you don't get a new line, addition of the roads and about the. But when we added all of that, um the top candidate for reconstruction was. And so now it's like is it because of the massive traffic highway and things like that, but there are numerous underlying utility issues underneath there, but not only affected. Highway, there were cap on the brakes that are affecting our whole system to the west. So you'll notice that there's a neighborhood just west of the highway and instead of over here, where we had history of all of the smaller breaks. And as we cut of the front, it came with the happening throughout the system.
We had a repair over there.
Yeah.
About a little less than a year ago, right?
So, so the correct amount, the gist of it is that if we can reconstruct and address that road and hopefully not only solve that area, right? The factors, the symptoms often solve other, other features. Uh but I'll say all of that, we can, yes, because I trust the parks asked last time, we have my for a grant for the section of the market. If we got that grant, which, you know, hopefully we do, and I can come to you guys with a question, the law of the new highway, where the switch gears.
Okay.
So I know, do you know when you're supposed to hear back on that grant?
Oh. Okay. And then uh one more question. Ten thousand dollars for new village welcome signs. Seems a little expensive to me.
Well, that's pretty cheap.
Yeah, it's pretty cheap.
No, but why do we need that though?
Well, it's comes out publicly, right, so we look at the, there's a couple of signs over here, the idea is to have at least one each of the entering points of the village. Uh so again, it's a marketing decision, it's a, there you are, we're doing a decision, one garden well.
So the welcome signs we have already are not good enough?
I'm sure that they are great, um the hope is to either create some new ones and new ones to enter to the village, or at least uh uh better the ones that we now.
I think the only one we actually have is the one off of fifty seven, right?
But the hope is that if there are the breaks, if my location in the village be multiple ones, so it's not just when you're talking all the highway, at least when you're entering, you got your part.
Yeah, we could take some of the uh kids ones to do the one during industrial part, or at least.
Yeah.
Half part, half village, half, you know. But yeah, there's only one sign, that's the same sign that's been up for. God, probably twenty four years or something like that. And it's pretty threadbare and we put all the trees down around it and everything because they're overgrown and it's been a process of trying to upgrade that from what it was, it was pretty shabby and hard to maintain. To a a new sign, new presentation, so.
Encouraging of a one foot that I got on a pretty interesting looking sign is about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars, so. We're now planning on the credit most beautiful on this side of it.
And it says overall, we have a thirty to forty percent or I'm sorry, a thirty percent increase in expenses, um was that, was that attributed to? I'm on the budget, oh, I'm sorry, is that the fire department, okay, I, you know, once we get that, I thought it was uh the the overall budgets, that's for the fire.
Like inside with my partner.
Getting okay.
Way to go, Crystal. He's like, I'm out.
I actually thought it was a thirty to forty percent in- increase in the overall, I have to, thanks for that, that's.
All right, I mean, and actually, if maybe we can just go down the line if possible, just to keep it moving, so. Don, you got anything?
One of the things that we should realize is that we have a a new increment of three point three percent, so. That new increment is going to be paying all of that three point three percent, so none of the rest of the taxpayers are paying any of that. So that nibbles a corner off of the the whole increase, so it actually doesn't uh, it doesn't result in what people think that it might. I know, so.
Right, uh Rick, you got anything?
Very quickly, just to refresh my memory, I know we talked about it before, but what was the for the uh, I'm gonna say massive increase for the capital projects in the sewer again over next year. You have five hundred and sixty eight percent increase, like two hundred and thirty nine thousand. That's what I figured, but I didn't.
Well, some of us, so what's a skip for last year for Guy in O'Neill, right? We got the two year increment for that this for on this year. I heard that.
Eight eighty, I guess it's.
Exactly, for good second hand.
Yeah.
There's pages that you can add to your one of the new people contest, because I wanted to have one page very. Who are at the word strength here, but because maybe a tour company sitting in the back of the boat for a lot of the burn. And then that they will come and they will play. So.
You didn't experience them.
Oh, yeah. How am I gonna do that? Not gonna sit there with the whole bunch. All right. Anything else on discussion on the uh preliminary budget?
I had one point, um. And then I'll uh, I'll uh, I'll be fine, but um.
You're all still fine.
Thanks for seeing it, Dave.
Absolutely, yeah, I got you, you read that, Don?
I guess I I kind of noticed the, I mean, was a substantial increase uh for robbery taxes last year and this year was a slight decrease. And um, you know, I discussed that with Josh before, why it was that way and why it couldn't be a little bit more than that. I was, I was satisfied with his explanation because I, you know, I, there were some shortfalls in the budget that uh that he explained to me and I appreciated that. But I think that, you know, for the sake of the taxpayers, uh i- if we can, we should look at decreasing taxes again next year. Um I know that if we, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, we can't do that, but I think that that's our obligation to the the people. And I'm, I've always been that type of governmental person, that we should keep them as low as possible, so. Um just something food for thought.
Yeah, I think if you remember to, when we were sitting here last year discussing this, it was painful for all of us, and I think I'll never forget Josh's quote, you know. We're not just raising taxes on you, we're raising taxes on us, we all live here, you know, and and you're right, that was painful and you get the bill and you go, ugh. But but um at the same time, I think it was one of those things where if you look at where we were, where we are, I think it was needed, I think a lot of things have started to improve in the village already, I think the. It'll just get better and better and hopefully, like you said, we can continue on what we're doing this year and uh making the taxes go down, be outstanding.
That's acceptable.
All right.
Excellent.
Yeah, if you have a serious amendment that you'd like to put in, um we would like to see it. Uh the clerk would like to see it and the treasurer would like to see it too, they can put it in a format with the resulting numbers that would be affected if amendment was. Abducted and whatever, so we can have an orderly process to um accept the uh the final budget.
You mean if I I objected to one of the budget items, is that what you're saying?
No, I mean, if you want to say, well, I'd like to take this money out, or I'd like to move this money and pay this with it or whatever, put that, that should be put in. To a format that um Jurassic Board can understand and. To see the the results, what effect that would have on the budget and the levy and where this, what we do to come to.
Right.
Um because then it, you're not doing the figuring on the run.
Right.
And everybody can thoroughly understand what you're asking for.
Okay, so what Don's saying is like how we used to do it. Years ago, if someone would make a recommendation, then we'd all sit there with our pencils and calculators and try and figure out, so if you're gonna bring something forward, have it typed up ahead of time, so we can actually. Sit down and compare it, so no one's sitting here being like, what'd you get, what'd you write down, so it just makes things flow easier.
Your slide rule?
Yeah.
And also I have had multiple times, so one change in one spot, if the tax typically.
Yeah, we don't anticipate anybody if that should happen, um we'd like to be prepared before the night of the budget.
Correct.
All right, anything else on that? If not, we will move on, um thank you, everybody, that's a good lively discussion, and I think that's, that's good to have, I like to have that and be able to talk through some things um. Move forward, so. Next is discussion and appointment of village representatives to the joint fire and EMS committee. So I'll just kind of point out, point this out by saying, um originally, we had some names in here for some people to put on um. To the the committee and had some conversations with a few people, uh and I think it's just best if. We talk to amongst ourselves who would like to be on it and then um take a vote that way and we can kind of go from there, so. Is anybody interested in doing it?
Well, it's been Josh and I from the start, so. Yeah, I don't know where this came from, I was kind of shocked with that.
So I think it's just reviewing whatever, right, I mean, it was US president, right, and somebody else and. Hey, you guys have been running with it, and as far as I'm concerned, I think that's great, I think you should keep.
So who was on the committee right now?
Uh it's Josh and Don.
Yeah, Josh and Don. And then how many do you need total on there?
Yeah, I think maybe it's been like three years or just months to be on it.
I don't know, that's why.
So you need additional people.
Oh, no, we're just.
Yeah, that's right, Rick, it wasn't alternate.
Still want to be your alternate? Sounds like.
That's right.
Yeah, you're right, somebody else.
I mean, I don't want to displace Josh or Don, you you need another one on here or w- if I.
The more you cook, you have the healthier soup.
Oh, you can add, so you're saying you can add more.
We have a pretty full uh room when we meet with all of us.
Okay. I could be under, I guess, I know, I know, we talked about that.
Is there, is there a maximum of two or is it, well, it meets once a month, right?
Um it has not met.
Not recently.
You do, there is a meeting scheduled and I have those agendas for.
You do, there is a meeting scheduled and I have those agendas for whomever. It's appointed today. Um, that meeting, the next meeting is October thirtieth at six. At the Tom Felton.
You're funny.
No, we didn't meet at all. Once a month, did we? Brand between. Oh, boy. Oh, well. The, the nighttime or?
Sure.
Yeah. You said the thirty-first at six. Sorry.
Thirty.
Okay.
Then Monday.
You, you go to that too.
So I mean, does it, if, if three people want to be on it, does it hurt to have three people that be on it? Or is it just too many cooks in the kitchen?
Can it hurt to be the alternate instead of you?
Good.
I could do that. Sure. If you don't like.
Okay. Okay. So if that's the case, do we need to vote on this then?
Somehow think you're more.
You know, a bit above police. I dealt with the fire department.
Yeah.
So. Any other discussion on that? Sounds like we need to appoint these people. So somebody would like to.
Make a motion to appoint John Costner to show the lower word as primary and Kurt Miley as an alternate to the joint EMS. Uh, joint fire EMS.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously and thanks for doing that, everybody. All right. Now we are, uh, looking for a motion to enter closed session pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight five. To discuss village administrator annual evaluation.
I'll make a motion to enter into closed session pursuant of state statute nineteen point eight five.
Second.
Oh, boy. He was louder, but I feel like he may have been first.
You're the chair. You're the chair.
Make sure you get that in there too. All right. And I have a motion and a second, um. You decide who you want in a second.
I'll take Josh.
Okay. All right. Let's start on the side of the room. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion carries. One session now. Again, now we're back in open session now.
Wave to the crowd. Hi.
Hi, y'all. All right. Uh, the next item is discussion and possible action to approve twenty twenty-four village administrator salary.
I'll make a motion to proceed as discussed in closed session with the amendment to the twenty twenty-four goals and objectives for the. Extended village hall office to have a. Permanent plan in place by June first of twenty twenty-four. I'll second that.
Right. I have a motion in a second. Call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Can you read that motion? Make sure that you got. Everything that we have in there.
Josh Pass moved. To approve the village administrator's salary. With amendments. Within, with the plan in place. By June twenty twenty-four. For permanent hours on Fridays. Is that what you said?
Yep.
And I'll get verbatim from reporting. Seconded by Kurt.
And voted on and approved. So.
I just wanted to make sure that we all heard that.
Okay. Um, then we have a motion to adopt village administrators twenty twenty-four goals.
So move.
Second.
So the goals are amended as we discussed.
Well, it's a Friday hours added.
What's it?
Permanent, uh, hours. We'll come up with a plan to implement.
By June first.
By June first.
You want a plan? I, you're saying one hour.
Plan by June first.
By June first.
Did we vote on that yet?
Yeah.
Okay. I feel like we voted on that last little point, even though we didn't need to. So, uh, we'll do that again. I will call that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is.
Yeah. Well, Don. I think Don.
I did. Oh, gosh.
Josh, I'm free to go home.
Yeah, it is. He's losing his mind.
All right. Any, what's that?
You're not wrong, Dan.
I know. All right. Any correspondence?
No.
Okay. Items for future consideration by the village board. Um, one quick thing that I will note and, um. Eric came to me. I don't even remember how this happened. You want to run down how this happened? It was the vacuum thing. So the vac, the vac, the whatever. Apparently the one that we have is busted and just sitting there and doesn't do anything. And the guy wanted six grand to fix it and he said it was worth. No, he wanted ten grand to fix it. He said it was worth maybe six.
Yep.
So, um, there happens to be another one that is going, that's coming for sale or something. Anyway, Eric's not here today, obviously, but for the next meeting, he's going to come in and discuss that. So just keep that on your radar that there might be something coming up. That makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we'd be paying for it with funds that would have been carryover funds.
Right.
We can talk about that.
Three budget fund.
Yeah. If we can talk about it next meeting, he's got it all later.
Right. But I just wanted. So, okay. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
How many people are? Just, just somebody. All right. All those in favor?
Bye.
Post motion carries. We're out here at. Eight fifty-seven.
That's not bad.
So was I. I know it's not you two.
Yeah, you got some places to be, don't you?
Why are these clocks always ahead of time? Is this like bar time or something?
Yeah.
Something like that. It's gonna be one of those nuclear fancy nuclear.
I told you, we should allow it to fall off the road and land on the ground as taxi down the area.
Yes.